Good evening, everybody. Let's call the meeting, the June 2nd meeting of the City Council for the City of Cannon Falls to order. Could we have roll call, please?
Bringle.
Here.
Duncan.
Here.
Gesmi.
Here.
Lindell.
Here.
Mattson.
Here.
Montgomery.
Here.
Altough.
Here.
Would you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Duncan and a second by Mattson to approve the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Carried. Okay, tonight we have a presentation from the Historical Society. A little background, Steve is asked to come and give a little presentation on the Historical Society, what's going on at the museum. A little background, you know, I think about three years ago, we bought the adjacent house next to the museum. The city bought it for the Historical Society. I don't know if you've been in the museum the last couple of years, but it's wall-to-wall stuff, and they were going to move their office into the house, and we helped them out with that, but they've been paying us back, and we appreciate that. So with that, I turn it over to Mr. Dablow. Welcome.
Thank you very much. I've been keeping John up to speed a little bit to what's going on. We've got another $10,000 that we have raised that we're going to be making contributions on. Of the $186,000 that we need to reimburse the city, we now have pledges just $1,000 short of $100,000. Money received or pledges, and that was really a whoo when we got to that $100,000, you know. But this $10,000 and the $10,000 a few weeks ago, that was all raised in January in the first part of February, because once the virus hit, we were just dead in the water, you know, as far as that, with some of the stuff opening up. But we will still have more coming in, because there were people that pledged money for three years or for five years, and working on that. So it's my job, I'm going to get it done. I look forward to getting it done. I just don't know how many things are going to be thrown in the way, because we had, what, two tornadoes that one night? You know? And everybody was busy for the next three months, and then it was Christmas, and then, okay, first quarter, and then some ding dong had a heart attack in February. What's the heck with that, you know? And so now we've got COVID, so I think we would have had it done by now. And that's really all I wanted to tell you, is that we're working at it. We've decided not to spend any money on the house. Zach told me today, people would be surprised how I've almost filled that house up with stuff, because the museum doesn't look any different. It's called decompression, okay? We had stuff in every nook and cranny. So I just want you guys to know that we're going to get it done, and I was hoping to have it done by Memorial Day, but that isn't going to happen, so we'll see how COVID affects it. Any questions?
Yeah, Steve, I have one statement or comment. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Yes, I can.
I just wanted to say that you've never looked better.
My wife made the comment that she sort of likes my hair a little longer. What does that mean? Well, thank you, guys, for your patience. It's a big deal. I have not let the program spend any money on the house until we get you paid back. I think that's a prerequisite. And we haven't been meeting ourselves much, but I told Zach, we got to get together, and all the board members have agreed, we can get six foot apart at the Guild Hall, and start doing some of the stuff that don't require opening up. Zach's really afraid, because so many of the people that come to the museum are in that over 70, 75 and older age group, and he just was afraid of infecting somebody and didn't want that on his or our shoulders and stuff. But I think what I'm going to propose to the board is that we work real hard at a new brochure for inside the museum, when people come and visit, a brochure explaining every picture on the post office wall. Kyle and I have met, we're going to revamp the walking tour, just freshen it up and all that type of stuff, so we're there. You just can't see us. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. He's been the president on offer a few years, and we thank him for his efforts there at the Historical Society.
I don't have my hearing, so I shame you.
Okay. Consent agenda. Consent agenda items may be adopted under one motion as presented, or may be removed for discussion and resolution as council business. For you at home and in the audience, I'll go through the consent agenda. Item A, the just and correct claims for the accounting period ending May 27, 2020. Item B, the minute meetings for the May 19, 2020 City Council meeting. Item C, approve the Mill and Overlay quote. Item D, Resolution 2482, providing for the sale of $3,780,000 general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2020A. Item E, municipal advisory agreement with Northland Securities. And item F, hiring an unscheduled part-time employee for the ambulance department. Is there anything the council would like to pull down?
C.
C? We will make that C as item G under council business, the Mill and Overlay quote. Is there anything else that you'd like to pull down? Not hearing any? Could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item C?
All moved.
I'll second.
Motion by Gesmi and a second by Bringle to approve the consent agenda minus item C. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Carried. Okay, we'll get right into council business. Item A is the baseball discussion of John Birch Park. Neil, I'll hand that over to you.
Oh, several weeks ago, Matt Montgomery approached me to put this on the agenda for discussion. I know there's been some talk about baseball teams firing up the Bears and some school stuff, and I think it's needed to be discussed and talked about and find out where we're going and how we're going to get there. Matt, you got any thing to contribute to that?
Yeah, thanks, Neil. Archie Swenson Fields, it's my understanding, I've received some calls, that they have been used by parents and kids, but they're abiding by all the Stay Safe Minnesota orders and staying with groups of less than 10. The question is now, as of this day, can we endorse that our parks, including all of our playgrounds, Archie Swenson Fields and John Birch Park be open for use following these guidelines? Groups of less than 10, practicing social distancing as best they can, wearing masks if possible, and still trying to play. So this is a big, I know that it says only in the council business, John Birch Park, but I would like this discussion to include Archie Swenson Field and allowing the CFYAA to hold practices there, as long as they are abiding by the rules which were said before. I also wanted to say, as of June 1st, we are now in Phase 2 of the Stay Safe Minnesota Order, which allows for youth sports in groups of less than 10. When we were in Phase 1, youth sports were not supposed to be held at all. So we've reached that phase, but then, no games, no tournaments, no travel is included in Phase 2. So I think it's just the right thing to do to get the ball rolling, to allow the CFYAA to have baseball and softball at Archie Swenson Fields, to open up our parks, putting up a sign with the state regulations, very similar to other communities, saying the playground equipment is not disinfected by the city, that people are playing there at their own, but that we encourage them to wash their hands before they arrive and when they leave, and never be a group of larger than 10, and practice social distancing of six feet, and if they could wear a mask and just stay away from strangers.
What you're saying, there are no games, we're just practicing? Is that what we're doing?
Correct, and that's the governor's office, what we were given in our notes. It encourages drills, skill activities, and I've talked to people from the CFYAA, they are totally fine with having groups of less than 10. I believe they said they could have three pods of less than 10 per ball field, if it's enough square feet, and I think the fields down at Archie Swenson Park, if you guys are familiar with like the youth, like the T-ball and the coach pitch and all that stuff, we set three fields in the outfield, so there's plenty of space, and if there's 10 kids in each of those groups, they can still practice social distancing and still play baseball and softball.
Matt, do you know, what about the adult games? Like, what about the Bears? Nothing?
It wouldn't be games. It would be so that they could use the park for practice, like batting practice, pitching, all that stuff, the team getting together. There is no plan right now for the leagues to be able to play, as far as I know, and again, the governor's order, not until Phase 3.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I wasn't being clear. I thought maybe there was something different for adult players? What if a group of 20 guys wanted to get together and play softball? What are you going to do? Is it okay?
Well, if they're less than 10.
Well, no, I'm wondering if there's a different standard for adults? I'm just, I don't know. I'm really truly asking the question if...
No, Governor Walz is...
Yep, and I don't have the answer to that. I don't think there's different rules.
Okay, all right, that's fine.
Hey, Matt, I was contacted by the guy who runs the volleyball league, just down the road from City Hall, and he wanted to know if they could be put in on this, too. He said they plan on scheduling so that there's only two teams there at once. They have to play with a little, with less people to keep it to 10, they're willing to do that. So he was just wondering if we could include them in this as well.
Yeah, well, again, to the best of my knowledge, being in Phase 2, looking at the Minnesota Department of Health website and their recommendations, as long as people are abiding by the rest of the rules of trying to social distance and stay safe, that outdoors are acceptable at this time, and that includes down at Mancing Park to play sand volleyball. In my opinion, that would also include our playgrounds. I know that we won't disinfect them, and I know that, I just know that there's a lot of parents that are ready to get their kids out. School is finishing up here, we're handing stuff in after tomorrow, after 5 o'clock, things are completely done with the school year. People are looking for things to do, and as long as they can abide by the rules and try to be safe, I don't see any harm in allowing our parks to open up, including sand volleyball and Archie Swenson and John Birch Park for the Bears.
So as I understand it, then it would be nine players and one coach, because obviously you're going to have a coach there. And the Bears...
Yep, you have to talk to the CFYAA or whatever governing board, coach, organizer, but yeah, as long as they follow the rules.
Right, and the Bears obviously have more than nine or 10 players, so how are they going to do that?
That's a question to ask somebody from the Bears. I don't have the answer to that.
Well, FYI, the barriers on the equipment and the parks have been taken down, and you know, they can use that, you know, like you say, at their own risk, but...
Well, but Mayor, there were signs posted just the other day saying parks closed, and it had public works on there. So until we as a council say that the parks are open and those signs are removed, and we put up other signs to say that they are fully open, they are technically, right now, still closed, even though the police tape and caution tape has been removed.
Well, they're certainly using them, though.
Yeah, I would, I would say, my opinion is, take down the signs, don't put up any new ones, saying you're playing at your own risk, because we all know what's going to happen if someone gets hurt. But as far as, you know, the social distancing, I guess you could put signs up, but I think that's, by this point, the people who can't read signs are too young to read them. Otherwise, we should all know we're supposed to be social distancing. I wouldn't put any signs up. That's probably the insurance agent in me coming out, but, you know, let's just, they're just parks, just like they were before. They close at 10:00 PM or 9:00 PM or whenever it is, and let's just not put any signs up. That's my opinion.
They're just open.
Well, has anybody got a motion in regard to the parks, and maybe the signs, too, in addition to that?
Yeah, that's true. You could do a second one.
I'd like to make a motion that we allow the CFYAA to hold practices at Archie Swenson and for the volleyball league to just open up the parks.
I will second that.
Okay, there's been a motion to open up Archie Swenson Fields to groups of 10 or less, the volleyball courts adjacent to City Hall down here, and the opportunity to use the parks, as long as you social distance?
Correct.
And remove the signs that the parks are closed.
Effective immediately, because we are in Phase 2, we're past June 1st, so I would say it would take effect as soon as we take a vote.
Effective immediately. Any other discussion on that?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I was, okay, go ahead, Steve.
I don't think you mentioned John Birch Park when you're reviewing the motion.
And I also don't think, I agree with you, Steve, I also don't think that we should limit it to CFYAA or any of those other groups. We should just say group, anti-groups, because otherwise, we're going to have all sorts of people calling and questioning. Does that make sense, Matt, or?
Yes, and I think that's, I've seen families go down there and use it, and as long as they're there and using it as a public park and staying in groups of less than 10, following the rules, I think we can endorse.
Okay, let's amend this motion, then. We're opening up Archie Swenson Fields to group of 10 or less. We're opening up the volleyball fields here next to City Hall. We're opening up John Birch Park to groups of 10 or less, and we're opening up the parks in town to the public and taking down the signs.
Correct.
Does that make sense?
That sounds wonderful, Mayor.
Okay, that motion was made by Matt and seconded by Derek. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? It's carried. We'll take down the signs.
And Mayor, I just want to add one little thing. The tennis courts, I've had some questions from people about the tennis courts. They are Ziploc closed and have signs up. Technically, that is the school's property, but I've been in discussion with Principal Hodges and Superintendent Sampson, and we are going to try to work something out where there's shared ownership there, because it's my understanding that there was a gentleman's agreement years ago that that was going to be part city, part school, but there's nothing in writing with the city or with the school district, so we're going to try to fix that. But with that said, they are following Minnesota State High School League rules, and the school property is not city property. They are working on their own safety procedures, which at the earliest would open up on June 15th. So I want people to know, as a city, we are opening, but the tennis courts will remain shut due to Minnesota State High School League rules until at least June 15th. So don't be confused and show up at the tennis court and think that the city said they could play there. That's shut down, till June 15th at least.
Yeah, the school's going to have to abide by the rules there. The city did contribute to those tennis courts with a nice check, but they're really on school property, so...
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
They'll have to deal with that one. Okay, moving on. The farmer's market details and grant information. I see we got Diane in the audience, if she wants to maybe give us an update on that.
Absolutely. Can you all hear me okay?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
All right, okay, good. First of all, I wanted to dispel any rumors out there that the city wants to shut down the downtown market. That is not true. As a partner with the EDA, I can tell you that our main goal is to support any and all of the businesses in Cannon Falls. And with that being said, three years ago, we were approached, we were one of 10 cities in the state that were approached to participate in the food aggregation pioneer program. It was a four-year commitment. We're currently in the third year, and I wanted to touch on us being down at Artisan Plaza, because I know that's been a question. With the requirements of the grant and having to meet the food handling requirements, the Minnesota Department of Ag, the only place that we could really be was Artisan Plaza. Luckily, they let us be there. We have been there for three years, and that is why we're at that location. That program does not belong to David Olson. It is licensed by the City of Cannon Falls under the EDA. Along with the food aggregation program, we're also invited to participate in the farm-to-school program. That is an offshoot of the food aggregation program. With those, we have gotten grants. With those grants, there's very stringent rules and regulations as far as how we use that money. It doesn't go into the farmer's market, per se. It goes to help run the programs, and we have to account for that money. And on a bright note, Compeer was one of our supporters of the farm-to-school program. With the regulations of the, of the grant, we were not allowed to give the money out to the school. I did approach them about a month ago and asked if they would change those regulations, and they did say that they would free up $400 that we were able to donate to the school this week for their food program.
Has anybody got any questions for Diane on that? No questions, we'll move on. Thanks, Diane.
Yeah, thanks, John.
Okay, Cannon Valley Senior Center. They were here last meeting and requested $2,000 from us, and now we've got it on the agenda. Anybody?
Well, I guess I would, I would love to give them the $2,000. There's some contention on $7,500 we were going to give to the fair board. I always thought it was for the parade. I know, John, you differ on that opinion. And I know they're going to think about trying having their fireworks there, but I would like to take the $2,000 out of that $7,500, and if the fair wants to put on fireworks, use the other $5,500 for that. I do want to give the Senior Center the $2,000. Every year at the fair, they help with selling tickets and parking, and that's how they make some of their funds. They weren't able to have fundraiser this year because of COVID, so I think we should be helping them out.
Well, I disagree with taking away from the fair. I've been on the fair board for a long, long time, and I've come to the council most every year, because the money that we come and ask for, the $7,500, Bill mentioned for the parade, but it's also for the fireworks. Let it be known, it's the Cannon Valley Fair that puts on the parade and the fireworks. Fireworks is not cheap. It's $10,000 or $11,000, and I thought it was a good gesture by the fair board to put on the fireworks. They're going to come up with some of their own money, but I don't want to take away their money for that. So I'd be against taking away any money from the fair board.
Hasn't that money already been allotted to the fair?
Yes.
They've already gotten it.
To take it away, wouldn't they have to pay us?
Well, or get less next year, I suppose.
Neil, have we actually given them the physical check yet? No, we have not.
Not till August.
No.
Oh, we haven't, okay.
There is, there is something that kind of sticks in my craw, that even though we're not, we're only getting one of the three things, we're getting the fireworks, not the parade, we wouldn't, they wouldn't be able to do that anyway, and obviously, the fair isn't happening. You know, I mean, I hate to assign percentages to it, but the fireworks isn't 100% of the fair. I guess I would be, since we've already apportioned it, I would, I wouldn't take the money from this year's donation to the fair, but maybe I don't want to give $7,500 next year, then, I don't know. But I don't want to take away what's already been essentially pledged. If we can swing the $2,000, I would be in favor of just paying it out of revenues or whatever we have.
Well, just remember, the fireworks cost $10,000 or $11,000.
Yeah, but that's not our problem.
Going up with their own money to pay the bill.
But that's not my problem. That's the fair board's problem. I mean, that's a business thing.
They wouldn't have...
I'm not trying to take it away from them this year, but I don't know. I don't know.
I guess I'll, I'll just make a motion that we give them the $2,000, we can worry about the fair later.
I'll second that.
Okay, there's a motion by Duncan, a second by Bringle, to give the Senior Center an additional $2,000 this year. Is there any discussion, any more discussion on that?
Yeah, I, of course, we're in tough times. We're during, we're in a pandemic. We would love to help absolutely everybody out, and when we made a gesture to help out other businesses, Bill, you said that we're picking winners and losers. We get one gentleman that shows up and asks for an extra $2,000, and we're just going to let it happen? I mean, I would love to help out every organization that we possibly could. I fear what precedent this would set, and also, I think it needs more discussion of where the money would go, what it would be used for, and why they need it. A lot of people have hit hard times, and you get creative and figure out how to get around it. I would love to help these people out. I don't feel that it's okay to just throw $2,000 to an organization without knowing where it's going to go, what it's going to be used for, just because we're in the situation we're in.
Well, you were quite fine with throwing the money, the $6,000 sum, around to reduce the licensing fees, without questioning where that savings was going.
That's because the liquor license are going through the city. This is money we already donate, and they're asking for more.
Right.
Rebating, giving our businesses money back that can give is totally different than giving people more than what they're asking for, without knowing where it's going.
You know, you know what, Matt, you're right, it is different, because what we gave rebates back to were all for-profit businesses. They weren't nonprofits. This is a nonprofit. They're losing, you know, I'm just going to guess, they make about $2,000 selling tickets at the fair, because they get a portion of the tickets.
They get more than that.
Yeah, they get more than that. So they're losing out on all that income. It's the Senior Center. It's not the bar down the street. I'd rather give money to the Senior Center.
I know about, oh, a year and a half ago, they were in dire need of money, and there was, John, I think you were there...
Yeah, you and I were out there, like, meeting, yes.
Yeah, and it was, they weren't in good shape at that time.
I don't know what's changed since then.
I don't either, but just so you know, that they have gone through tough times.
Yes.
But could I ask the Finance Committee where this money would come from? Who would this affect?
It would come out of contingency that you have in your budget.
I think my preference, kind of like what Mary Jo said earlier, I'd like to just keep all the stuff we allocated for this year, just keep it. We already planned on it. If we want to give them a couple thousand more, you know, next year, we can talk about that here when we start our budgets. But I just think, you know, there's a lot of charities in town, or not charities, nonprofits in town, that are probably hurting. I'm sure every church is, you know, you name it, and, you know, as much as I'd love to help them all, I think it's tough this year. So I'd prefer to just keep, keep what we already have on the books, and we can talk about doing more for next year.
Well, there's a motion on the table to give them $2,000 a second. We've had a discussion. Let's have a roll call vote on that. We've had a discussion, let's have a roll call vote on that.
Aye.
Duncan.
Aye.
Gesmi.
Aye.
Lundell.
No.
Mattson.
Aye.
Montgomery.
No.
Althoff.
Well, I don't know.
Sorry. Okay, the motion passes four to two, to give the Senior Center another $2,000. Okay, requests for proposals, professional engineering services packet approval. At the last meeting, we, O'Neil, why don't you handle that one?
At the last meeting, you voted to bring back a packet for requests for proposals for professional engineering services. In your packet, you'll find the request for proposal that I put together. On the back page, you'll also find a schedule, but I want to make one remark, that the actual application submittal deadline is July 1. I didn't get that one changed on the back. So with that said, it covers an awful lot in the proposals, and as you can see, it draws out on a lot of different stuff, and I think my memo stated that we should have a variety of people on the, on the selection committee. Three finalists come to the city council with presentations, and do it in a work session With that, I'll, I'll take questions.
Any questions on that?
Well, I know at our Finance Committee meeting, we discussed possible composition of, of that committee that would look at these proposals, and...
That was Public Works.
We didn't talk, that was Public Works.
We didn't talk about this one.
I thought we talked about this.
Yeah.
I know we talked about it, but we didn't.
Well, this is gonna be much more boring than that one.
In my memo, I, I have one person from the Public Works Committee, one from the Finance Commission, the mayor, the street supervisor, the utility supervisor, and myself, to select the three finalists.
That sounds good.
So I entertain a motion for requests for proposals for professional engineering services?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Motion by Duncan, and a second by Lundell, for requests for proposals for professional engineering services. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Carried. Okay, Tillian Brewery had all requests to use city property. Turn it over to Laura Qualley, our EDA Director.
At the last city council meeting, can you hear me okay? All right. The mayor had brought up that he had spoken with Chris Larson, one of the owners of Tillian Brewery, concerned with not being able to increase their sales based on their patio service that they have, or the space that they have, and then with Governor Walz's Executive Order 2056, that was allowing restaurants and bars to reopen, partially reopen on June 1st, some of our bars and restaurants aren't able to maybe service our customers because they don't have an existing outdoor space. So Tilly, with Tillian Brewsters, Chuggers, and also Nick's Diner, they have brought forth a map showing that they, what expanded seating they would like to have on the sidewalk contiguous to their building. Mill Street, they already have a patio, or a deck out back, they've got a covered patio, so they've got theirs covered. The VFW is not gonna be reopening, we, we talked with them, they just feel that they'll wait till they have full, full rights to open. Rancho Loco, they'll be expanding on their private property, and then the winery also, on their private property, will have a roped-off area. So basically, this is just asking permission for Tillian, Chuggers, Brewsters, and Nick's Diner to occupy temporarily the sidewalk contiguous to their space during this executive order. Are there any questions from anyone?
Just on Nick's, we got an amended agenda on their thing, I always knew they had the thing on the side of their building, but I see here they're gonna put it on their sidewalk, and it is a little bit of a...
Yes, so we did discuss that, and then they also did get written permission from Merchants' Bank, because technically Merchants' Bank owns the parking lot that would be above that retaining wall, and they would be expanding, you know, I think they have like four or five spots that they have lined up in front of there, but they have written permission that we have, that I have on hand. And then they've also provided their certificates to show their license and everything is all up to snuff. But to your concern, Bill, I understand, because that was one thing that I brought up, I'm like, you know, I don't want to be sitting on the chair with my back pointing downhill, because that's just gonna be my luck. But anyway, I think that, you know, we're all, obviously hoping that this is all so very temporary, but, you know, I think that they'll be, you know, they'll, they'll find out if this works for them or not, they do have their patio, and they are able to get five tables out there, which is pretty compact anyway, but I mean, they're able to spread them out, so we'll just, everyone's gonna have to play it by ear, I mean, everyone's being as flexible as they possibly can, we just, as a city, didn't want to stand in their way, so that's why we're just trying to get permission to expand that sidewalk use.
And just to be clear, too, with the winery, expanding to the west, meaning they're just gonna keep it on the sidewalk, or are they gonna go on the west side of the building as well?
They're going on the west side where the mural is, so that is their public, that is their private property.
Okay, no, I, I just wanted to know, because you said extending west, I didn't know if it's just further west.
Oh, no, no, wrapping around the building, so they'll be on the north side of their building, wrapping around the west side of the mural.
Okay, and they figured out the barricade issue, because that is a throughway?
Yep.
Okay.
And I think they have it in, they have it set in for, far enough that like the traffic wouldn't be a barrier. And then Tillian also, you know, they have their plans to probably put up snow fencing or something, because that is a driveway, or a thoroughway on Veterans Lane, because we can't block that off, because Art Org has, they have their garage door and entrance down below, so we can't block off Veterans Lane.
Right.
So they will have kind of more of a, like I said, probably snow fence or something like that. And as far as, I know that when the mayor and Chris had had their original conversation, they were kind of talking about a deck, they aren't gonna build anything, it's not even gonna be a temporary thing, they're just gonna have tables out there, so there won't be any structure actually built, temporary or otherwise.
Okay.
When we, when we talked, when I talked to Chris, and, you know, I think Neil and myself's biggest concern was that their liquor license was expanded to cover these areas, and they're, they've taken care of that, that was my biggest concern.
Every single one, I made contact with each and every one of the businesses, whether it was their private property, or they're expanding onto city sidewalk property, just to make sure that their premises for their liquor license is expanded, their liability is increased, and that kind of thing, so that all of those boxes are checked.
Good, thank you.
Just, just hopefully, it doesn't have to take very long till we can get to the...
Yeah, we hope we're back to normal.
Yeah, pretty soon.
By the time they get it figured out, they'll lift the order, hopefully.
Well, I'd entertain a motion then to give these businesses the right to use, you know, their property, and in the case of Tillian, city property, to expand their business to these tables.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Bringle, second by Gesmi, to approve the request of these businesses to expand their business outside. Is there any other discussion?
Hey, Laura.
What was that?
Hello?
Yes.
I was gonna ask, it's kind of opening the door to, you know, the governor's office says, get creative, is this a way to open the door to where we could have, similar to our first Thursdays or fun fest, and we shut down streets and allow these businesses to branch out and have more customers still abiding by all these rules? I know that that's a separate issue, but is that also a goal here for the city to expand?
Well, you know, actually, in talking with the business owners, like talking with Mill Street, talking with Nick's, you know, the winery, you know, part of it comes, becomes a staffing issue as well, you know, I mean, is it going to make sense for them to add more staff, to be running around more, to doing extra work, to really not even still probably break even? So a lot of them are trying to just keep their heads above water right now, and they'll take whatever they can get, so I mean, they're satisfied with getting some tables outside, you know, and keep in mind, we are in Minnesota, today was super hot, I wouldn't sit outside, and now it's raining, and I still wouldn't sit outside. So, you know, I think that, you know, they're gonna, I think that they've, they've done really well with their takeout, and I think that they're gonna continue with that, people that are itching to get out on a patio and have a drink or a burger, they're gonna do that, you know, and I think that having that, and I know that Matt and I, you and I had talked about, you know, kind of a festival seating, but it sounds like the restaurants don't want to try to change their model any more than they're having to model it right now, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we're trying to accommodate, especially Chris down at Tillian, with today's guidelines, he figures that he can only be a quarter, at the most, half-capacity there, so I think anything we can do to help out with these tables outside, we gotta do. Well, anyway, there's been a motion and a second to approve it, is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Carried.
Okay, approve to hire a public works director. Neil, send that one to you.
Okay, it was a consensus of the Finance Committee about a month ago to wait till the stay-in-place order was lifted, so we could do individual interviews, or at least social distancing interviews. Wes Anway has decided to move back into his wastewater position and let the interim public works director position go back, so I think it's time, we met as a Finance Committee last week, to move ahead with the, with the hiring of a public works director. They also discussed who should be on that committee if it does move forward, and the suggestion was to put a public works committee member, one of, it would either be, what, Matt, or Steve?
Steve.
Steve?
Steve, he's the chair.
Steve's on the chair, yeah. So you got some work if this goes through, and, and then, who was the gentleman that they also suggested, Mayor?
Oh, we, Dan Massett from Merchants' Bank, he, he was on the last time we hired a public works director, his dad, Dean, was the public works director in Redding for about 40 years, and he had a lot of good input, and I asked him again to be on the committee, and he said he would.
So with that said, the Finance Committee unanimously, they had to hire the public works director position, and if the council sees fit, we'll start advertising tomorrow and, and move ahead.
Okay, a motion to hire a public works director.
So moved.
So moved.
Oh, you go ahead and move it, Steve.
Motion by Gesmi, and a second by Bringle, to hire a public works director. Any other discussion?
Just, just one, as we continue forward, and we, the committee that will be interviewing people, and they make a choice, are we gonna do like we did with Neil, and have the whole council, keep this person, or...
Doesn't hurt, I mean, it doesn't hurt, Bill.
It's suggested in the, be a, with a member of Finance, Works, and the mayor, and city administrator.
Right, but if you, if you remember when, as we were in the process of hiring Neil, it was kind of insisted upon that the whole council interviews for some of these upper positions, and so I was just questioning whether we're gonna do that or not, or just rely on the recommendation.
We certainly could have a work session, you know.
Beforehand.
For sure.
We could.
I mean, I was always, I was always fine with the previous way we had done these things, where a committee would make a recommendation to the council, and the council would go yea or nay, and you count on these committees to do their job.
But, yeah, but I could see where...
Well, that's gonna be the case this time, too.
Yeah, so we'd have a recommendation, and, you know, or whoever, I'm not on it.
Let's leave it at that, the committee will make a, and if there's somebody that wants to call for a work session, we can do that, too, to meet the candidate what they suggest, so.
That makes sense.
Okay? Okay, the motion's on the table to hire for a public works director, and there's been a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Carried.
Okay, reports, I see Kyle's out there.
Wait, you got, you don't have an overlay yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right, don't forget.
Item G, I forgot about that. The Mill and Overlay project, okay, go ahead.
Okay, I think it's a great, we received a great price and all that, but I just want to know if Greg, what you need addition to make it up to the 130s, you know, extra work?
Thank you, one point of clarification, I did forget to include the public safety parking lot area when I sent the quotes out, so that area isn't in there, so that would be part of it, but you're right, we did get five very good bids back out of the seven I requested. What I would need would just be a block or two to look at, and then we would apply their unit prices and verify with Rochester Sand and Gravel, that indeed, they'd honor them for the additional work, just giving them the heads up here at the beginning, that that's a possibility, I don't see why they wouldn't, if they can do it all at the same time, but just wanted to be clear that I goofed up and, and forgot the area of the parking lot to be included, but I'm pretty sure they'd do it since we're gonna be doing Hoffman out front of the fire hall, just wanted to get that out there up front.
What about, what about, as long as we're kind of underbid, and we budgeted $130,000, what about including Barclay over there, too? Would it be worth it to look into that, what that would cost, too?
You mean out of...
Well, for sure, that was kind of part of that whole area, has some of the similar issues, I think Ridgecrest was the worst one that Wes had identified, but those other ones are all the same era.
Yeah, Barclay's parallel, and it's kind of in bad shape, too, but...
Yeah.
But how much will that, $27,000 carry us?
How much will, will that get us a cul-de-sac? That's kind of what we've got, double cul-de-sac. Well, get us one, come on, Greg.
I just say, check into it.
I don't know if we'd, I don't know if we'd get all of Barclay done, but if you were to authorize up to that amount, we could make something work in that area, including the parking as well.
Yeah, I think, I think someone talked about the parking lot last night, and that really does kind of make sense, because it is a...
Oh, that blocks, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Just having pour the extra into that parking lot. Okay. Thank you, Greg.
I'll make the motion if you want.
Go ahead, pull her up.
Okay, Morris makes the motion to approve the Mill and Overlay quote, but we're gonna include the parking lot down at the public safety building, and look into, check into the Barclay.
Barclay Circle.
Barclay Circle, East and West.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Mattson, and a second by Duncan, to approve the Mill and Overlay and including the parking lot, and looking into Barclay. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Carried.
Okay, now we can do jobs.
Now we'll go into reports. Kyle, Chamber.
Good evening, council, city administrator Laura, and of course, the community. The first thing I would like to do is thank Laura and the CEDA, and the Cannon Falls EDA, for matching our dollars with a grant from the Blandon Foundation for Growth Zone, which is called, which is also Chamber Master. This is... is called, which is also Chamber Master. This is a membership management relationship program that I just took the first training day today, and, um, it's gonna be a tough couple of months through October, but we'll get it done, and it will really help the Chamber plus the businesses themselves, absolutely. And so, thank you very much for pitching in on that, Laura. I do want to mention to everyone that we had, um, a group, I'll just leave it at that, a group come in to the, uh, Chamber office about a week ago, and they purchased over $3,500 in Chamber dollars. That was distributed this past week, and so, that $3,500 will be spent in Cannon Falls businesses, which is incredible at this time. And so, I do want to do a shout-out to say thank you for coming to the Chamber, and I'm sure the businesses will thank you also. The Discover Guides, my gosh, they were done back in March, but we are shipping out 28 boxes tomorrow, June 3rd, and that will be 1,680 Discover Guides, and then we distribute the rest throughout the community, the campgrounds, um, restaurants, whoever would like them. The last thing is the July 14th Fun Fest, that is, uh, the next one. There has been no decision if we're holding it yet or not. Um, the Chamber office will be surveying the vendors to see how they feel about coming. Um, we would definitely have to do spacing like they've been doing at the farmer's market, um, plus with the extended table in front of their booths. And so, um, just keep watching the paper, because we'll put an announcement there either way. Any questions tonight?
Questions? Guess not.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Kyle.
Thank you.
Uh, Trail Board, anything on Trail Board?
I don't think, though. Is there, Matt? We haven't met since the last meeting, or have we?
Trail is open, barriers are down.
Yep.
Enjoy it. It looks great. Uh, my family went past it, got the pictures, those bridges, uh, all the construction, it looks wonderful. So, trail's open, expect, uh, more people this year. I think I said it in the previous meeting, the online sales, uh, they can, the online sales they're tracking are spreading further than they have in the past. Uh, I think it was a thousand dollars more, uh, within the same timeframe, uh, as last year. So, expect more people. It's gonna be a busy year on the trails, and they are wide open. All the construction's done.
Yeah, they really worked hard on those bridge reconstructions. You even, you go across, you know, if you go over a concrete bridge, there's nothing, but they put the, the, um, wrap, the, what do you call those things? Tread, not treads.
I forget what the name was, but they made it so it's like you're going over-
Over wood, over wood, yeah.
So that you get that ba-ba-ba-ba-bum, uh, noise.
Yeah, you get the ba-ba-bum.
So it's not just flat cement, um, and they look really good. Yeah, everything looks great.
Yeah, it's gonna be cool.
Well, I wasn't on the trail Saturday or Sunday, but boy, the parking lot was full down there. There must have been a lot of bikers down there.
There was Saturday.
Yeah.
Saturday especially. Okay, Finance Committee?
We met last week. It was terribly exciting, and, uh, mostly we talked about the, um, public works director and how we were gonna do that. Uh, there are some, you know, tweaks that are be, gonna be going on, but nothing that's gonna, you know, nothing earth-shaking right now, except we're getting into the budget process. That's always a good time. So, in the next month or two, we're probably gonna have to kind of nail down what, what we really realistically think we can, both what we can get and what we can ask for. They're different things, you know, they're different things.
Set a preliminary levy or something.
Yes, we need to set a preliminary levy. So, when we have these finance committee meetings, I definitely encourage all department heads, council, well, yeah, council members can show up, they just can't vote, so, um, please, come and, and give your input. We, we can't do this alone either. That's all I got.
Okay, very good. Well, let's go around to everybody and see if there's anything. We've got, uh, Morris, anything?
Nope.
Anything else, Mary?
Well, yeah. Greg, are you still there? Did he leave?
He's there.
I am so proud of your COVID hair. I love your COVID hair. Anybody else?
I will freely admit that my daughter attends the, uh, Aveda Institute in St. Paul, but I have let, yet to let her touch my hair. She's done all the rest in the house, but not mine. I'm holding out.
Well, if you see Neil Jensen's hair, you know, yeah, maybe it's better just to, to say no, to say no. That's all I'm gonna say. That's all I've got.
Thank you.
Phil?
Uh, I've got nothing.
Derek?
Uh, nothing really, just wanted to confirm, do we have a, uh, planning commission meeting coming up on Monday?
Yeah, June, yeah, Monday, June 8th.
Okay, okay.
6th.
That's, uh-
Yep. Matt?
Yeah, I just wanna say congratulations to the class of 2020. Uh, the school, I think, handled things as best they possibly could with the graduation ceremony, uh, putting together the pictures and the video of everybody walking up and getting their diploma, playing it on a video screen while people were in their cars. Uh, it was, uh, a really neat experience, and then the parade afterwards. I, I think this speaks well of our entire community, to see how packed the route was, yet people were keeping their distance on the boulevards, and it was really neat to see all the students come through, wave, say congratulations. Um, despite this pandemic and all the rules and all the distance learning that we've had to go through for these last few months, uh, I think that the school pulled off that graduation ceremony very well. Uh, and I think it was, uh, wonderful of our police, uh, to help escort them in the, in the service and to keep everything safe. Uh, it ended up being a wonderful night, so, uh, I just wanted to say, great job to the school.
Yeah, that really was cool.
The parade was fantastic.
It was really neat.
Uh, Steve?
I have nothing.
You have nothing?
Except the grin.
Okay, let's go around to, uh, who's out there? Nicole, anything? I see you're out there.
Um, yeah, uh, the, I wanted to let you guys know that, that we're finally starting to get, uh, everything that I ordered as far as our sneeze barriers and cleaning supplies and spare masks, if people want to come in and use a mask. Um, so, I am projecting that we're gonna open to, by appointment only on Monday, and that's gonna be during our, our still reduced hours, and then we'll just kind of go from there. So, we're, we're gonna be taking appointments for computer use for three of our six computers, because we're gonna require social distancing, and up to five people for browsing and checking out, but we're still gonna continue our curbside service. We're still going to continue quarantining items for up to 72 hours. Um, still doing our programming. Summer reading also starts on Monday, so that's going to be virtual, and we're still finalizing all of those things. Um, I, um, the last thing I can think of is that, just to try to, I know that people are eager to be face-to-face with us, but it's just been really difficult. I'm hoping to start doing storytime in the park with the whole social distancing at Riverside Park, starting next Monday at 10:00, and I even have like a microphone and speaker so that people can hear me from a distance. And at East Side Park on Friday, starting next week, doing Fit Fridays, and I'll do Tai Chi because it's low intensity. Um, and again, with the social distancing, encouraging people to wear masks and whatnot. Also, when people do come into the library, we are strongly asking people to wear masks. I'm setting up sanitize, hand sanitizer right inside the doorway. Um, but just as a courtesy to others, just in, because we don't always know who's at high risk. So, that's all I'm remembering at the moment.
Okay, thank you. Greg, you got anything? You're still out there.
Um, that's enough, I guess.
Okay, okay. Laura, anything? Neil?
Got a few items.
Hey. Got a couple items. Uh, little update on the Cannonball. Uh, we did get the, the water well sealed, and, uh, there was three monitoring wells that were, uh, resealed. Uh, the company that did it prior to that had, uh, sealed them once, but the, uh, the grout had slipped and, and moved down, so they, uh, they came to the table and, uh, redid it for us, and that was, uh, quite some time ago, so that was good. Uh, demo on the building will be, uh, starting approximately the first week of July, is what it's scheduled, pending, uh, of course, weather and, and construction timelines, you know how that works. So, that's moving along just, uh, uh, pretty well. Uh, hopefully, the, uh, the building will be down by the end of July, and, and it'll look good. Uh, the trail grant that we, uh, through Hannah's Ben's Park is, uh, is moving along. We're doing archaeological study as we speak. Uh, they're about half done. Um, so if you see some guys out there digging square holes, that's what they're doing. They're looking for, uh, um, artifacts and stuff.
Artifacts, yes.
So, uh, they should be done actually, uh, with their fieldwork by tomorrow, fill out the report, and then, uh, we're gonna move forward. Uh, the motor vehicle department is open, and, uh, they got their, uh, protections in place, the glass is up, and, uh, um, they've been quite busy. Uh, I wanna make one comment. Steve, on, uh, public works, uh, commission meetings, um, I've been talking to the guys, and when they get a, uh, a group of agenda items put together, we'll call for another meeting, and, uh, we'll play it like that instead of every two weeks, until we get a public works director on, uh, on board. So, I've been talking with, uh, Tony, and he's got some stuff that he wants to discuss. I says, "Well, get a group together and we'll, so we can have a decent meeting." Uh, City Hall, um, when are we gonna open City Hall? Uh, I would suggest that we follow the lead of Goodyear County when they open there, uh, uh, and the governor's executive orders, you know, they're, they're gonna go by that, so I, I would suggest that we open up when, when they do, and, and, um, and I don't know when that is gonna be, to be honest with you, so. I think that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, I got a couple things. If you haven't heard, the Cannon Valley Fair and the 4th of July parade have been canceled. I guess we were looking on the fair board, uh, Federation Fairs, and I think 87 counties, I think now over 60 have canceled. Yeah, I don't know-
They can't get the carnivals to come, isn't that part of the problem?
They can't get the carnivals, yeah, it's, it's pretty much gone. I'm sure the rest of them will cancel, too, especially with the state fair closed. I just had one request real quickly. The Rotary Club approached me about putting a plaque down in the gazebo down at the head of the trail downtown. Uh, they wanna put a plaque. They've lost two of their big members, uh, Paul Bringle and Dick Dalton here in the last weeks. They were wondering if they could maybe put a plaque down there. I suggested maybe a bench, and they were looking into that, too, but they, they were leaning toward a plaque. I don't know if that's something we need approval for, or what people think about that.
I would think you would, or everybody's gonna put a plaque up. I, I, I would think it's going on our gazebo. We do own that, right? It's not like-
Well, it's in city property. Is it a combination of the-
I would assume it's ours, it's not the trails or anything.
Yeah.
That's always good.
That's, yeah, city right there.
I, I guess, John, now that you brought that up, um, our morning coffee group, uh, has some funds, and, uh, I mentioned this to you once, that, uh, Dick Dalton, who was a, an extremely good athlete, uh, in the Cannon Falls High School history, with his passing, we're thinking of trying to put a bench at John Birch, maybe just to the south of the cement, uh, bleachers, but we're still looking into that, and that's something that our group would, uh, would pay for, and we would come to the city to get, of course, approval.
Well, I suggest the Rotary Club do benches, too. So, maybe I'll just get back to them. Maybe they look into that, too. Like you say, maybe putting plaques there, and everybody wanna plaque there, too, huh?
I don't know.
Yeah.
I'll ta, I'll talk to them.
Yeah, we can find some way to help them out, I'm sure.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, let's get into public input. Citizens may speak to issues not on the agenda. Before speaking, please give your name and address for the record, and kindly limit your comments to three minutes. Public comments must be respectful, pertinent to city business, and adhere to the applicable data privacy rules. The city council will not take action on any issue raised by the public, but maybe, may choose to schedule consideration of the item on a future agenda. Public input.
Hello, my name is Tim Molly. I'm from Cannon Falls. Um, the downtown, uh, Cannon Falls Downtown Farmer's Market opened last weekend, and I'm proud to say that we are the only hands-free wash station in town. Uh, but I'm here to speak about, um, um, a different issue. Uh, we have a food hub with a license supposedly in town here, but the problem is, the food hub has no food. It's not getting any food from the vendors that are currently listed under that food hub. I've contacted five out of the seven, and all of them are pretty much disappointed. Um, that raises a lot of concerns. One of is, where's the money going? If we don't have a food hub supplying to the schools, where's this money going? We're in year three of this program, and we're not getting any food from us farmers.
Not from downtown.
Not from downtown, so where's it coming from?
The other one.
Hmm?
The other one, Artisan.
That's what I'm speaking about. I'm talking about the farmers at Artisan Plaza. They are not providing any food to the food hub.
I guess I don't understand what the food hub is, okay?
This is a real issue.
Going. Go on.
So, with that, I keep hearing that, you know, they have a license, they're sanctioned by the state and all this stuff, but we're not providing food for anything. There's nothing going on there. Where's the money going?
What, you keep talking about money. What money?
Grants.
The grants.
The grant money?
There's almost like $10,000 involved. Why are you shaking your head?
No, I'm, I didn't understand that.
Okay. Do you approve of this?
I suppose I shouldn't have talked to them. Don't talk to them.
I want it on record.
Tell them we don't take action on anything.
Anybody?
And-
Didn't think so.
We don't take-
I rest my case, thank you.
Okay, we don't take action on stuff brought up in public input.
Okay, anybody else? Public input. Public input. Third and final call, public input. Hearing none, we'll close the public input portion of the meeting, and I take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion, my Duncan, second, my Mattson, to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Carried.